Thank you. I'm going to call this meeting to order. It is 5:30, October 24th, 2022, in the Silver Consolidated School Board of Education Administrative Offices. Welcome. This is a regularly scheduled work session of the Board of Education for Silver Consolidated Schools. Welcome, members of administration, fellow board members and esteemed guests and presenters. Welcome for joining us. Patrick, will you please do a roll call?
Absolutely. President Ashley Montenegro.
Here.
Vice President Dr. Michelle Diaz. Secretary Patrick Kahn.
Here.
School Board Member Mike McMillan.
Here.
And School Board Member Eddie Flores.
Here.
Thank you. First item on our agenda for the work session is consideration and approval of tonight's agenda. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Kahn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McMillan. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. First item on our agenda is Mr. Travis Yurcik, the Principal at Jose Barrios Elementary, to present on Common Planning Time. Welcome, Mr. Yurcik.
We're going to come together if that's what.
Yeah, so joining him is the La Plata Middle School Principal, Ms. Starr Cruz. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam President, fellow board members, Superintendent Hawkins. So we're here today to discuss the implementation of the Common Planning in the district. And so one of the things is, I think I have, I had sent a PowerPoint, but it's establishing a culture within our school systems where we have this time to benefit children in what they're doing in the classroom, also helping teachers plan better. One of the major things that makes our school great is that we have a positive culture which student-centered, staff like to share with each other, they always have, they're willing to take risks when it comes to academic, just anything academic, they're goal-oriented and data-driven. And so the culture for our CPT has been going on, and I've been working on it for close to a decade. It was there when I got there, it was good, but we've been working continually. So this year, what is great is that because of that culture, now we have the time. So we have that time every week. So we appreciate that, Mr. Hawkins, and how we collected bar to make sure that we had it on a weekly basis. Okay? And so.
Mr. Yurcik, so the presentation should be right in your board book. Under number three, you should be able to see the PowerPoint slide and the PDF. I just wanted to make sure I gave them an opportunity to pull that up.
There it is. Thank you.
It's very short and bulleted, so I'm going to go through it, and then you guys can ask us some questions. I think that's probably going to be the easier method to go through it. Or you're welcome to come visit one of these days during the Common Planning Time, especially at Jose Barrios. But some of the school-wide supports that we use during Common Planning is the establishment of student portfolios. A lot of our teachers are now having students do portfolios which have goals for testing, work completion, homework, that type of thing. They set individual goals with these students during parent-teacher conferences. And we also have established what we call a team time. So every day from 2:00 to 2:45, every kid in the school has individual instruction, whether that's on a computer-based program or a small group with any individual that we can get in front of them. We group our grade levels, first, second, third, fourth, fifth, and sixth. So third grader may work with fourth grader, second grader may work with third, vice versa. Okay? We do weekly progress monitoring, which we go over every Wednesday, and that's either on iStation, iXL, MAPS, these are all our sort of cycle formative assessment. Our IAA's, our ancillary staff, and parent volunteers also help to meet these kids' needs during these times. And then, of course, we do the four PLC questions, which I'll leave for Mrs. Cruz to talk about, but it's basically what are kids learning? How are they learning it? Do they need more help? Do they need to be accelerated? Do we need to adjust our instructions? We'll go more into that later.
Mr. Yurcik, if you don't mind me asking, and thank you, you're doing a great job, would you mind telling us, what does it look like? So from the time that students leave to the time that you guys go in, what does that timeline look like, just to get an idea for someone who's never seen it?
So about 1:30, we dismiss. So about 1:45, we start going to what we have as our workroom, which is room one. The grade level teams will be together, they're all sitting down at tables, and they're working together, going over data. And they're looking at what the kids have accomplished for the week, what the data's telling them, how to group them during our team time, for that 45-minute time, three to four, easily about four times a week. They're discussing where their gaps are in curriculum, looking at the scope and sequence. There's a myriad of different things that we're doing at that time, but basically, it's all student-centered, right? What can we do for kids to make sure that they're successful at the next level when I send them to Mrs. Cruz when they go to high school? Can they be successful and have the skills necessary to be productive citizens? I mean, that's probably what we start most meetings with. What's our goal? And our goal is to send our kids to the mid-school, and they know that they're Jose Barrios students. And that means that they're ready to learn, they're ready to work. Nothing against any of my other friends in elementary level, but we take pride in that. And so that's important to us.
Thank you.
Okay. And then we use, things that we use the data for, which would be our short-cycle assessments, our weekly curriculum, individual instruction, the MLSS layers, which allow us to go through layers, like I talked to you guys about that last year, and SAP referrals. And those are referrals for academic problems, behavioral problems, physical needs. We establish the team time rosters, what kids are going to, what teacher, what are they going to be working on, and how we're going to progress monitor that, and what kids need to be in and out of tutoring. So we won't keep kids in tutoring forever. They do well, we pull them up, we switch it out. And then.
Okay, so coming from the secondary side of it all, you know, that's the elementary point, but for us, it's been more of a slower shift to getting into the PLC and using that Common Planning Time. Last year or last couple of years, we had like one Friday that we'd get to have some time together, but it wasn't very much. But this year, now that we have every Wednesday, we kind of made a shift on how we want it to be together, what we're going to do to meet the needs of our students. And so what we do is, our school culture has also been very positive this year, and our teachers have been very on board to do what's best for the kids. And so every Wednesday, we meet together in one common area, which is our library, and we do it as content-based. So all math is together, the ELA teachers, science, special ed, history, and our elective teachers are also in on the conversation. And sometimes they're together planning, or they are actually separated into the content areas as well, to be that support. As an elective teacher, how can I tie what they're working in into my classroom as well? And so that weekly meeting has really created kind of a positive culture with one another because they see each other so often now that they're able to offer ideas across the board or just come in with a goal. What are we going to work on today? What data are we going to look at? What are we going to plan for for next week? And what's, you know, what's going on with our scope and sequence? Are we on track? Are we behind? Are we ahead? What are we doing? But there's always a goal for what the time is used for. And so that four PLC questions, it, every meeting is centered around the students. So what do we want them to know? What do we do if they don't get it? What do we do if they do? How are we accelerating them? And how do we respond in general just to what they need to know? One of the biggest things that has been really successful is we established some norms with our staff, like what do they want this meeting to look like? And really giving them a voice for how they're going to participate. And so when we did that, it, they all held everybody accountable to making sure they're on time for the end, setting a goal, everything, assuming positive intentions with one another, you know? And everything has just been a cohesive, collaborative goal with one another, and kind of looking at it as, these are all of our students, not just, I have this student and I'm struggling with this student, but these are all of our kids, and they're all a reflective, you know, to La Plata. It's just not your kids, it's my kids. And so. And so, of course, a lot with that comes, you know, the progress that has been made, I've already seen, is just a lot of the shared strategies with the teachers. And if I say, hey, make sure you bring this to the PLC, that they come, they come with their rubrics that they're grading on, they come with student samples, they come with everything to talk about. So it's been really, really awesome to see the staff be so, what's the word I'm looking for? Like, on their own, they're just positive about it, and they're willing, the willingness of them.
Motivated.
Motivated to make the school, you know, for the good of the school, trying something and taking risks to see what's going to be good for the school. So.
I guess we're open for questions, which maybe.
Sure. Any questions for Ms. Cruz or Mr. Yurcik? Eddie? Mr. Flores.
Madam President, Mr. Yurcik, Ms. Cruz, whoever wants to answer it. But, and I'm just curious, is this the same at the high schools as well? I don't know, can you answer that? As far as the early dismissal on Wednesdays, are they using that for the same time?
It's been negotiated for all the way from pre-K up. So all levels of our system do have Common Planning, starting a little bit later as the dismissal time is, we'll start at 1:30. I think theirs starts at 1:45. The high school's 2 o'clock, just because of blessing.
We have, we release that too, so that's how we can get together. But yes, they do gather together as well, and on some of the same format.
So the second part of my question is, and I'm not an educator, I'm not a teacher, and forgive my ignorance, but I've been to a lot of meetings throughout my career, and some meetings are redundant. It's like the Threat Assessment Committee. We don't have to meet every month just because it says we have to meet because everyone's busy. And I understand that, however, if there's a need, we can have a meeting tomorrow or within 30 minutes, or something like that. Or we try to meet at least once a month, if not, maybe once every two months, something like that. But my question is, after you've had these meetings and gone over data and created plans, at some point, is there a time that you allow the teachers during that early dismissal time to actually work by themselves and work on the plans and the data given to them, and saying, okay, this is what we talked about last week, I'm going to come up with something to implement the plan in my classroom? And that's where I'm a little confused, because I think some teachers had the, maybe misunderstanding too, that Wednesday, early dismissal every Wednesday would be, maybe to allow them to catch up, because as you well know, I mean, you know better than I do, teachers are always working at home, busy grading papers, entering grades, talking to parents. Is there a plan for that in the, any time in the near future to allow them that time to catch up?
Right now, our initiative is to get it established and to have norms, right? And to meet every day, and to, every Wednesday, to have a purpose, right? As we go forward, I don't know what, you know, how it will evolve, but teachers also have prep time, they have common time that they can work together at my school, above and beyond the CPT time to get those lesson plans and those things implemented. A lot of that is also happening during the meeting, they're sharing with each other what's working, they're planning together, you can go into several different classrooms, and they'll be working on similar things. And that's interesting to see at my level. And so I think establishing, like, this is a time we're working and looking at things to make solid decisions for kids. And because, in my opinion, you know, I've been doing Common Planning for 25 years in a district, when it's not organized and it's not, like, we've established it this year, it can become very, some people are working really hard at it.
I see that part too.
Some people are doing different things, not saying that what they're doing is not important, but we've been given the kind of, you know, we're going to establish this, these norms, these things that we're going to do for at least an hour minimum during that Common Planning Time.
Thank you.
And to piggyback off that, definitely, I think, trying to establish that culture first, to make sure that we're all on the same page before we move off the path that we're on. I need to change course and to go into that without making sure our foundation is set pretty strong.
Thank you.
And just to kind of go with that, there's a lot of work to do, right? I mean, is it even enough time? Is it very, you know, what if you didn't have this time every week? Can you kind of speak to that? Because there is some people in the community that are like, every Wednesday? And, you know, and so it was so important to us as a board, but also administration, you know, the vertical and horizontal alignment, that's been a big deal. And this is one of those things that we wanted to accomplish in this. So, I mean, is even an hour, an hour and a half a week enough time, truly, to accomplish what you need to accomplish?
I think, I think for us, it has been. It has been. At first, I wasn't sure, you know what I mean? Because by the time we do dismiss and get kids off campus and making sure that everybody has a chance to take a breath and then get to the meeting, but it's been, for us, it has been appropriate a lot of time.
I believe so too, because we've established the norms of the meeting, so we can get right to business immediately. And about within hours' time, it's time for them to be, to go back and put those plans in place, start making those things for the next school day, next school week. And so, yeah, I believe it's enough time.
Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Flores, I appreciate the question, because I've gotten a question at every campus that I've been to. If I'm not asked at least once, then I wonder, right? But I do get the question of, hey, is there a chance we could get an opportunity to get a freebie Wednesday where we can go and get caught up? I get that question. And I, I've tried, I've toyed with different ways to word it, but it always comes out the same way, which is, right now, during this time that is set aside, is the opportunity for our own professional growth as a campus, as a grade level team, and as a district. And in the past, we've not been able to establish that expectation, right? And so we want to make sure that we do that. They do have their conference period every day where they can do individual grading and they can do the things that teachers want to do. I do think at some point down the future, there may be an opportunity to say, okay, this Wednesday, we're going to, this is, we can release teachers. I do think there's going to be an opportunity for that. I appreciate the way, thank you.
They did a good job.
Yeah, you guys did a great job at answering that. I know you're like, oh, I'm just going to stop. But the reality is, that's from me. My expectation is, we need to get on the same page professionally, as, in order for us to continue to be treated as the professionals we are, we've got to use that professional time to grow. Some of our new teachers are learning from the senior teachers and their mentors at a time that they've not had an opportunity to do so. Likewise, some of our seasoned pros are getting an opportunity in that collaborative environment to glean from some of the new kids on the block, right? And so you're seeing a lot of that take place. But they're also beginning to have conversations that they've not had before or had the opportunity to do before, which is, okay, we just gave the same common assessment. How did your kids do so much better than my kids? Or you just did this resource, or where did you find this? And they're able to really have some dialogue, that it's not that they couldn't do it before, but oftentimes it was rushed, right? But you got this opportunity every Wednesday, we know it's going to happen. It can feel like anything else, if we're not careful, it can get monotonous. And so I appreciate the way, which is one of the reasons why I asked both of these principals to come in, I appreciate the way they continue to keep their meetings fresh, engaged. If you ever get a chance to go to JB or La Plata on Wednesday PLC, I walk in and, they're not paying me any mind. They come in with focus, the team is running and going, and I'm just like a fly in the wall sometimes. But the secret is, if you bring chocolate, they'll at least look at you for five minutes. But overall.
Well, that was one of our norms. We have to provide some good snacks, but we do. I mean, I feed them every Wednesday because, you know, I know that they're hungry and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But Mr. Flores, to your point.
We'll work for food.
We'll work for food. But to your point, Mr. Flores, I do think we've got to be careful that, one, we're using the time wisely, but two, we also keep an eye on when that need comes, and we'll keep an eye on it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Ms. Cruz or Mr. Yurcik? Nope. Thank you guys so much for coming. We sure appreciate the presentation.
Thanks for the information.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on our agenda is adjournment. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Flores. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kahn. Will you please do a roll call?
President Ashley Montenegro.
Yes.
Vice President Dr. Michelle Diaz. Secretary Patrick Kahn.
Yes.
School Board Member Mike McMillan.
Yes.
And School Board Member Eddie Flores.
Yes.
We are dismissed, and it is 5:50 PM. We will start.
So he's supposed to talk tomorrow then?
So I told you that.
Okay.
That sound good?
Yes.
So now you have to speak right now because I spent like five minutes.
Yeah.
So so after you finish this speech, right, there's gonna be applause and applause and applause. Then you have to stand. Star Wars. Exactly. Sorry. Can you comment?
Sure. I'm right right now.
So so what happened to finish your session when you're coming in, you know, she'll she's sitting right where you're right on your right. Just be prepared for that. As you're in Star Wars, we are out there talking about. Or you can speak out in the side up to your students. When you start to fall off. There you go.
I am going to call the meeting to order. It is six oh one, October twenty fourth, twenty twenty two. We are here in the boardroom of Silver City Women's Schools for our regularly scheduled board meeting of Silver City Women's Education. Welcome fellow board members, members of the administration, members of the community, and esteemed guests. Um, Patrick Lee, please do a roll call.
Absolutely. Madam Chair, Ashley Montenegro.
Here.
Madam Vice President, Dr. Michelle Diaz.
Here.
Secretary Patrick Khan here. School board member Mike McMillan.
Here.
And school board member Eddie Flores.
Here.
Thank you. Please just drive me for the pledge of allegiance followed by the Mexico flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the zeus symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
The first item on our agenda is review and approval of minutes for last month's work session, regularly scheduled board meeting, and finance committee meeting. Do I have a motion?
Motion?
Motion by Mr. Khan, do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. McMillan, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Number three is consideration and approval of tonight's agenda, do I have a motion?
Madam President, uh, motion to approve as presented.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, may Mr. Khan, um, just a few things to note, um, the recognition of Silver City Women's Club, we are going to postpone for next month. And then we have, um, a redundant action item, so there's just approval of disposal of ha- of auction items under both the finance and then as an action item, so we will only take action on that one time. Just for clarification. Um, I have a motion and a second. That was discussion, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Um, item number four on our agenda is information and presentations, this is the non-action item, uh, section of our agenda. Um, item A, programs and presentations. Again, as noted, the recognition of Silver City Women's Club will be delayed to our November fourteenth meeting. We'll have to let them know that they got a kind of club in there.
Yeah, there, I have to see, she owns there in the market.
Okay. Alright, so the next item on our agenda is the rec- recognition of Kewanas Students of the Month. Should I hear it, should I?
Well, I, I think we will do it, and so, um, I will, I am a core substitute for the Kiwanis, but, um, our Kiwanis has, um, presented, provided monthly opportunity to recognize our Students of the Month uh, at our middle schools and our high schools, both here in town, uh, for La Plata Middle School, Silver High School, as well as CLIF. And so, the these students are nominated at the campus, uh, these are students who are exceptional. They expand out, uh, monthly for either academics, character, um, and their willingness, uh, to go there each month and take care of one another. Today, we have for La Plata, we have a student, uh, of the month for October is, uh, Ms. I apologize if I did not remember her name.
Chilima.
Chilima?
Yes.
What you could.
Yes.
I think you're here. Alright, so now, I don't typically do this, so I, so if I mess up, you just gotta elbow. We're gonna do okay. So Chilima is an eighth grade student at La Plata and exhibits great character. She's kind to her peers, she's a good role model for other students and is a leader in the school. And that was from your principal, that's what she had to say about you. And so, that typically what they're gonna do, they have a gift certificate that they're gonna give, so tonight here I'm gonna say I think we've like three hundred dollars. I'm kidding. But I just want you to know that we appreciate that you're here, that you stepped for the school and for your peers, and we appreciate that your mother is here to support you with you. So, thank you for being a great student. And person, the person needs to shake your hand and thank you as well. Thank you. Thank you. Alright, Silver High School? Alright, uh, our student of the month for Silver High School, uh, is Adriana Mandelo. Did I say that last time right?
Yes.
Come on down, girl, thank you. First and foremost, I must pres- make sure that you're all aware that while she appreciates Star Wars and is a fan of Star Wars, she really is like, you know, it's more the year than actual fandom, just so you know. The history department selected you and they wrote up some thought to, to let you know why they selected you, alright? Audrey, is it Audrey?
Yeah.
Okay, got you, okay. Is the social studies department recommendation for October, uh, she is an outstanding student with a three point nine GPA and is currently ranked fourteenth in her class. Within our department, she has taken both honors U S history and honors world history. She excelled in both classes. Audrey is extremely articulate, and I know this because she corrected me several times earlier. She is hardworking and contributes to our class discussions. They value you greatly. Audrey is also part of the National History Day program, which is why you're so articulate. Alright, she is doing a group documentary this year on the X fifteen man flight program? Okay, alright, her enthusiasm is infectious, as you guys would conceive, uh, and she is a great addition to the program. Additionally, they would add that Audrey does all, does all this while maintaining a job at Morningstar. Audrey is truly amazing in their eyes, and this is from the entire history department and Ms. Gomez Johnson, your counselor, put this together for you. So, thank you for being such a baby.
It doesn't.
Thank you.
Do you wanna wait? Can we just be two?
So, our other candidate for CLIF schools is not here, she's out to get a golf tournament?
Yes.
Nice, and so what we'll do is when we go out to CLIF next month, we will recognize McKenna Maltz. Then, that is last name.
Yes, you do.
Nice, so we will recognize her name as well.
Next item on our agenda is recognition of New Mexico State Senator Saye Correa Hemphill. Well, thank you for joining us.
Madam President, members of the board, it is my absolute pleasure, take a moment, to recognize, uh, our state senator. She has been, uh, an incredible partner since I've been here in the school district and wanted to make sure that our students', uh, emotional needs are being met. Uh, my first, I had a, a meeting with her this last year, one of the first things we did is we talked about her concerns with coming out of COVID and how it was impacting not only our staff, but also our students, our students from the high school all the way down to the elementary. We talked about the importance of outdoor learning and how opening up that opportunity for students would not only improve the safety of our classroom for our kids, but also make sure that our students are getting into a different learning environment and being activated accordingly. Um, over the course of the, the year, we had an opportunity to also talk about ways in which we can engage our students from a supportive, uh, discipline approach, right, and making sure that, um, our students, uh, again, looking at their emotional needs and what the issue is at the time, conscious discipline and not going right into punitive consequences. And so, we had an opportunity this past fall to bring not only Silver Schools, but Cobra Schools, as well as Aldo Schools and all of the others, the, the smaller, uh, private schools together and participate in the conscious discipline training in August. Um, I, I continue to get, uh, compliments about that from staff, in fact, they're like, when are we doing something else? So, thank you for that reminder right now, but I want you to know that we appreciate your partnership and what you've done for the district and for the community, and thank you.
Thank you, and if we'll stand here, I think Louis wants to do something with his camera, it's not an apple, so.
I'm, I'm doing the best I can.
Thank you. We'll, we'll do another one.
Yes, ma'am, is there anything else we can do to support you, please?
Thank you.
Um, next item on our agenda was recognition of Representative Luis Torasis, I don't know that he's named him yet.
He's running, he's running a little late.
Okay.
And so, we will. It is basically the same, uh, except it wasn't so much the, uh.
Oh, social, emotional.
Social, emotional, so Representative Torasis has been an advocate not only for Silver Schools, but also, uh, in town, but also for CLIF schools out of town, right? You know, he's, he's been out on the ground, roots in the ground, going to campuses, um, hearing concerns of staff and parents. Likewise, he's been in our office, he's visited with us numerous times over the past two years. Most recently, he has engaged us with our concerns on attendance, uh, and what we need to do to, uh, to de- decrease habitual, uh, absences in our schools and what we can do to, and use, I hope I use the term right, Louis, but really, uh, find ways to support and, and compel our, 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 our parents in the community who aren't following compulsory education to what we can do to help encourage them to get our students in. Uh, the Attempts for Success Act is a great com- resource, as it has numerous ways in which we can positively engage our parents and our students to encourage them to come to school. One, one other component that is missing though, is what happens when all other exhaustive means have come to an end and the student is still not attending. Where, where then do we turn? And that's where we engage, uh, Representative Torasis, because I believe in positively engaging our parents and our kids, and there's a lot of times kids don't come to school for a variety of reasons, whether it's because they don't have clothes, right? Or it's because they don't have transportation, or they're struggling, uh, social, emotional needs, all these need to be engaged by the school. And so, we need to take care of those needs first, uh, but when we've checked off every box and looked at everything we can, and it's just that I don't want to, what happens then? And Representative Torasis is, is stepped in to engage with Mr. Alvarez to have some conversations, to see what those options can be. But that's just one of the main ways in which he's stepped in, I know that in CLIF he heard some concerns regarding the age of the building and what we can do about next steps, so where do we go to, to look at funding for it? Um, I, I believe his heart is sincere and he wants to continue to take care of our community and our kids, and I just appreciate his, his time to influence us as well.
Alright, next item on our agenda, um, under programs and presentations is S D E A. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. How's everybody today? It's been a, it's been a Monday, hasn't it? Yeah, okay, so I'm not, wasn't sure I put this on the, on the agenda legislative meeting, I think you were alluding to, um, maybe the fallen delegate council that I talked about last time? Um, due to timing and medical appointments, nobody was able to go, so we don't know really what was discussed there. We haven't heard any news of what happened up there in Albuquerque. But I know there's a, a big push going on for the eighty twenty split for districts across the state. As I said last time, they gave us this nice seven percent raise, insurance went up six percent. So, cost of living is not really getting taken care of, so, um, we are gonna have, uh, like a town hall meeting with some of the legislators. Soon, I hope, maybe next week, um, we have one, a person from Los Cruces that's setting all that up for us. And, uh, hopefully we can get one of those done next week, and we'll see what happens. It's gonna be good, good for our state if it goes through. So, any questions?
Madam, any, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Alright, item number five, information to the board, Superintendent Hoffman.
Madam President, members of the board, um, one of the, and I, this may sound a little, uh, repetitive, but monthly I want to continue to bring to you information regarding the progress of our strategic plan. On September twenty ninth, the strategic plan took on a, a different form as we began to look at goals. We compiled, um, two teachers, a parent, a, a classified employee, as well as a, a district employee. All were, we get into the room for a little while and start really looking at our bulleted items under our strategic plan. We looked at these bulleted items, items under each of the pillars of significance, focusing on accomplished students, empowered employees, involved parents and families, and integrated community engagement and partnership. The goal of, of this particular meeting was to narrow down our, our evaluative scope every year. So, the reality is, you can't be a master of all things at the same time. And so, what Dr. Genoa Butler did with us is she asked us to look first at each of these tools, which were, which pillars were, what did the community feel was most important at this time. Once we went through that process and drilled down, um, through conversations, and they were really good conversations, she has a way of pulling information when you're, when you're wanting to be shoddy. If I wasn't shy, I, I don't mind sharing my thoughts ever. Um, but she was able to, to quiet me down and, uh, and bring out the voices of everyone else in the room. So, we did one, narrowed down the pillars of significance, then once we did that, we then grilled down to specific bullets of each of these accomplishments and narrowed down which ones are we wanting to focus on this year. And so, from there, what we have in front of you, and I just wanted to kind of visually do this for everyone here, from there, what would they did, the, what she did, is she had us cope, so to speak, kind of like dropping a marble in a, a jar for every one of these particular, uh, bulleted points within there, to really narrow down what we wanted to see in the offensive. So, what you have in front of you is I, I took the liberty of providing one, because I think you probably have like nineteen different copies of the, of this, but you can never have too many copies of our strategic plan. So, that's page one, on page two, you have, uh, I did a very brief snippet of her PowerPoint presentation that we followed during the presentation. And so, the first one you can see, again, focusing on system thinking and alignment, people first, service is everything, strategy and execution, and results matter, and I appreciate the way that she lined that out that really, uh, kind of captures where we are. The following subsequent pages, you're gonna see the pillars, students, employees, families, community. And you'll see where each of the members in the group began to narrow down their focus for bullets, as far as which bullet they're focusing on. What we ended up focusing in on was accomplished students. Make sure I get this right. Sorry, close it down. Accomplished students. Community survey is, is one of the tasks. Community survey is one of the tasks we're gonna take from there. And below that, involved parents and families was another focus area that they really, that the committee really felt needed to be looked at, and integrated community engagement and partnership. So, those are the three that we really started in right there. And you'll forgive me, I think I'm learning how to use this, so I think I highlighted, if you're looking at the, so I, you're going, why is that yellow? I was messing with this, and I think I highlighted it in the board book. So, you're probably seeing, if you looked at it in the printer, you're seeing that yellow highlight there. So, you'll see the annual goal in the far-left column. Oh, it's just mine. Excellent. So, I'm the only one who can't read it. Excellent. So, annual goal in far-left column, the next row, you're gonna see measure. And so, if you looked at it, you saw that there were different ways that we can measure progress. So, what she did is with each one of these strategic goals, she wanted to make sure that we understood the options, the way that we can provide, for lack of vocabulary, evidence to progress, right? It's not just me coming and giving you a narrative, but do we have something substantial that you can concretely point to and touch, whether it's a survey, whether it's attendance data, whether it's grade performance or student achievement data? What tools and evidence are we looking at to provide to the board and to the community to show that progress? So, that was part of the training that we went through. Several of the measures that were looked at were, are gonna be focused on baseline data. And oftentimes, that baseline data may take on the form of student achievement, it may take on the form of surveys, whether it be survey data from our parents, from school-age appropriate students, and/or from the community, depending on the different pillar that we're focusing in on. And so, as you look at those measures, you're gonna see surveying students under accomplished students, because we want to get their insight as well as the high school is looking at engaging in innovation, innovative learning, right? There's gonna be a survey there. You can also see attendance data as a tool for measuring. You're gonna see parent and student survey as a tool for learning. You'll see a survey from community as a tool for learning as you look at these categories. Community survey is a pretty big one. One of the conversation talking points, we're looking at supportive work for our staff, is looking at not only a survey during the year, but also looking at exit survey data from our staff, whether when they retire, or when we have an employee who's looking to make a change in their career or go to a different district. And what does the data tell us about the reasons why they made that choice? And so, that's gonna be one of the components that we look to enact as far as our goal set. And again, it would be a baseline year, getting that information. Under integrated community engagement partnerships, that's one I really wanted to make sure we included this year, because we're really making an effort to continue to reach out to our community. And so, grow the intentional, and I use the word intentional, grow the intentional culture of Silver Consolidated Schools so that relationships with community stakeholders are meaningful, nourished, which is an interesting word to use in this context, but nourish, and expanded to serve as community-based model of education over time. Last spring, for a brief moment, I got together with several leaders in the community who were looking at applying for the community and community schools grant. I'm not sure if you're familiar with community schools grant, and it's a massive grant that really pulls in the different spokes within a community, whether it's meeting the needs of students, social, emotional needs with the, working with your hospitals, or medical services, or meeting the needs of food scarcity, right, with the commons, but just really looking at what are some of the needs that our community has, and how can we pull those resources and those leaders into the schools? Well, when we started to look at it, we began to realize pretty quick that while our hearts were in the right place, we didn't have the right structures in place to move forward in the action, right? And so, this year, we're continuing to put in more of an effort in helping to build those structures, and so, quite possibly next spring, we might be in a position to apply for that grant. We weren't last year, and I'm not sure that we will be this year, but by seeing what we wanted to get to, I really wanted to make sure that we included this as one of our goals for this year, because there's definitely a desire for our community to get engaged with schools. And so, I bring this information to the board for you to look at and to consider. A decision does not need to be made now. As you look at this, and if you'd like to meet individually, to look at some of the other bullets under the different pillars that you might want to ask about, ultimately, the board makes the final decision. And so, I think it's important to have your insight as to if there's certain areas where you're going, hey, we really, really, really need to look at this, and this needs to be a priority if the board feels that you want to add, then most certainly you can, and I'm hoping you guys have any. Next, any questions?
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Hopkins?
So, I do, just from like an understanding perspective. So, the goal that is here presented is what is right under, it's all verbatim, this information, correct? This column?
Yes.
Would it be this column? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So, then, when we are adopting the goals, what are we adopting specifically? Because like there's these four goals, and then there's all these different measures, and then how we're gonna measure them?
Yes, ma'am.
And so, I guess I'm just a little bit confused, because I thought we were gonna try to work on like one or two or three of these bullets down here, not try to take it all on. So, I'm just a little bit confused if there, if you could provide some clarity in that realm.
So, from, what they'll do is kind of what you just said, is the goal is to look at one of those, each of these particular sections, and then for each of the bullets, it depends on what we decide as we go into it. So, for prepare students to engage fully in education, everything that we do for each of these pillars, you gotta do a baseline first to see where we are. And so, for each of those areas, the first things first is looking at what do we have in place? And so, if we're, the survey will help give us some insight in any one of these, and from that, we can narrow down more. But most throughout, most of the information we have right now is that we go at base at best. We don't really have any baseline data where our needs are. Our community and our board has told us, these are areas that we wanted to improve in, now we need to target down and drill down to where are our weakest areas, where do we need to get better?
Okay.
Does that make sense at all?
I think so. So, just to, I'm gonna spit it back to you, just to see if I'm kind of following you. So, what we're gonna do is we have these four goals across the top, and then we have like subgoals down below, but basically, what we're looking at here, looking for adoption by the board, is that in order to assess where we are in all of those goals, we're gonna create a baseline.
Baseline either through survey, through achievement data, through attendance data, you're gonna, we're gonna provide for you over the course of this year, data reflecting on where we are. And from there, you're gonna, okay, as a board, next step, and it's a cyclical process. And so, once we go through this, it'll be annual, if not biannual, that we do it. This week, on November the second, I have another meeting with our leadership team, as well as with Dr. Juneau, and she's gonna take us through this exact process as well from a leadership standpoint of what's next. We know that we're gonna focus on students, community, and parents, okay? So, we know that those are the three main parts we're gonna look at. What she's gonna do next is kind of help us drill down further into that. But what we didn't want to do is quickly identify and not have your insight. Does that make sense? So, the committee narrowed that down, now we want to see where some of your concerns or questions or supportive guidance will come into play.
And I think once we're provided with baseline, you can't know where you want to go unless you know where you're at, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So, I think that's gonna be helpful for us as a board, with obviously, a lot of input from administration and principals throughout the district, because we're not the boots on the ground, so we can say, let's get a hundred, and then you guys are gonna be like, ninety-nine is the best we can do. So, thank you for that. Appreciate that. Any other questions for Mr. Hopkins?
Madam Chairman, Chairwoman? I just feel all the tools necessary, we do need that when it comes to, it's just not one thing, we need the whole data, just so we can analyze, just so we get a strong strategic plan in place, so Mr. Hopkins didn't mention a certain, the information that was gonna be provided to us, I think we need all of that, not just one.
So, when you look at the first one, Madam President and Mr. Khan, so under accomplished students, what we would provide, what we need to do is, we need to survey our students, right? We need to see those results. We need to survey our community, we need to look at our attendance data. K-12, what is our data saying about where we're seeing our habitual absences if we're having those issues? Where are they? And are they happening at certain times of the year? Are they happening at certain times of the day? What does that data telling us, right? And so, to your point, we'd want to see all of that. Same thing with parent surveys as well, you kind of wanted to do not just a traditional survey of what P E D has done, which is focusing in on school safety. Do I like my school? I like my teacher. Do I feel safe at school? Those are, those are those atmospheric questions, but also, you can delve down into more specific questions as it relates to the learning, you know? Do I feel informed? Am I engaged? Those types of questions from parents. So, to your point, yes, sir, we would want to make sure that we put all the information in front of you guys.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I would just say, when we engage parents and students in these surveys, I think it's, and it's on here, I just, I think it's really important when we're actually forming the surveys to incorporate what do you hope to see as far as access to resources, and what do you want the curriculum to look like? Because lots of parents and lots of students want to see a traditional college preparatory format, and then there's a lot of people that want to see us delve into more of the vocational options. They're just a vast, there's a huge variety, and parents are very happy to give you that, and students have a better idea now of tracks that they want to go, not that they have to be pigeonholed into that, they can still be exposed to whatever venture they want to, or whatever pathway. I hesitate to use pathway, because I feel sometimes we force people to choose a pathway early on, and then it limits exposure. But I think a lot of people have an idea of what they want to do as far as that preparatory piece, and so, it's kind of like those that'll do digital credit versus, you know, the E P versus, you know, the vocational stuff. So, I think those pieces are gonna be critical when we hear student input and parental input on those issues. And when we hear out in the community about what is wrong or what is right, I feel like a lot of times, it's really tied to that exposure or those resources that are accessed or not accessed.
All I can say is, yes, ma'am. Because you're not wrong.
Thank you. All right, since we're still on you, we could just take a minute. Representative Torres, if you'd like to join us, would you like to present anything more fast?
I have all these wonderful things about you, huh? I don't know that I could do just as fast.
You don't have to repeat it, sir.
Oh, you sure?
No, I'm pretty easy.
It was an oratory, I believe two board members left.
Oh, is that, wow. As a funeral director, thank you very much.
In all seriousness, Representative Torasis, we thank you for your tireless service to the district, to the community. You've been great in being an ear, not only for us and administration, but also for administrators, our parents, you've been an involved parent in the community, as well as not just in Silver, but out in Cliff. So, we just thank you for the time that you devoted to taking care of not only Silver, but Grand County.
Thank you very much.
And now, you have to go around and.
Turn around a quick.
You got to take a picture? Oh, okay. It's an Android phone, so good luck.
I'm just gonna tell you honestly, you guys have a wonderful administration, and I don't know that it's my turn to speak, but sorry, Madam President, I just, I just think I have never seen such an active administration, and I mean that. Mandy and I have talked about it. This is, I've never felt this good about what's happening with Silver Schools. So, I really, and it takes all of you guys to make this happen, but Mr. Hopkins, my hat's off to you, and my tokayo, Luis, you know, tokayo is the same name. They're doing a wonderful job, they're so, I mean, they're everywhere, and I'm everywhere, and so, I always see them everywhere, I go, these guys are tearing it up. So, thank you very much for all you guys have done, okay? Thank you for your support.
We'll shake their hand.
You bet.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you for letting us do that. All right, next item on our agenda, Mr. Luis Alvarez.
That's how, that's how a tokayo works, right? Get them all confused.
You gotta confuse me.
Madam President, Members of the Board, esteemed guests, I do present in front of you, this is our personnel report, and I'm happy to say, well, we actually dropped a tenth of a percentage point. So, we're at ninety-eight point six as far as being fully staffed. We did have a person, we lost a person, but we gained them in another position, so we had to post that position, as well as we lost one of our special ed teachers out at Cliff, so we are currently working to go ahead and rectify that with our job post. But I stand for any questions as we stand.
Any questions, Senator Alvarez?
Madam President, Members of the Board, uh, Board. Wow. Uh, there's a couple things I want to add. One, I want to take a moment, I would be remiss if I didn't thank Mr. Staley and our program. Mr. Staley's been all over the district, and his kids, if you had an opportunity to see the video, the football field, his students, basically, that's one of their projects, and I don't want to miss words, it's so similar, he's rolling over, trying to write words, sorry, sir. But the students have done the videography for that. Likewise, all of the plaques that we provide, that we do not only here, but throughout the state, they do that on campus. They have the technology and the resources, and they create those, they design them, and they make them, again, last year, I believe they provided the plaques for the N M A A Wrestling Association for the Hall of Fame. They were contacted by the N M A A to do that. His students are contacted from around the state to design and craft these plaques, and so, I just wanted to.
The one that you provided.
So, the plaque that we provided today to Representative Torasis and Senator Hemphill were both designed by the students, right, and then produced and crafted by them in their department. So, kudos to them, and my students, and that's their message to you. So.
Thank you for that, Mr. Hopkins. Thank you for that, Mr. Hopkins.
Also, Madam President, Members of the Board, I just want to add a couple kudos, two things, one, if you don't mind me, Mr. Alvarez adds.
No, I have no problem whatsoever.
One, so if you recently saw the work that Michelle McCain in her office has done in transitioning to paying our subs weekly, and so, we are now in the first week of that. So, if you light candles, please light a candle for this first week, because this is gonna be a fantastic week. But since we have put that information out there, we've increased thirty new subs into the polls in that very short period of time, so kudos to that. Also, we are looking for a special education teacher, and we do have a signing stipend of twenty-five hundred dollars. Since this is on live, I just figured I'd take an opportunity to put a plug for the signing stipend of twenty-five hundred dollars for a special education teacher, if you'd like to join the Silver Consolidated School District out in Cliff. Did I say that right, Louis?
That is correct.
All right, do you have enrollment for us, too?
And I do also have enrollment, yes. So, I'm hoping I'm doing this right, because my sister's not here to help me. Okay, Ben, I pushed that one. Okay, so there they are. This is the enrollment data that you'll also find in your board book. Roughly, in talking to Mrs. Barris, she said that there was about a four-point, four students, I should say, difference, and so, three of those were at Kinder, and one was at the high school level, I believe it was at tenth grade.
When you're not, when you're down.
So, we lost four students.
Any questions for Mr. Alvarez on enrollment?
Because I could call Mrs. Barris really quick.
So, this is, isn't it in our board book, but if you guys remember, she shared the Google Sheets with us at Google, and I just pulled that out, and it is showing the same data that you see up there. So, Google Sheets on your district computer, five-year enrollment trend. Any questions?
Doctor Davis. Is there a way, when we're looking at it in a moment, like if people come or leave to, well, it's more of a leave party, is that where you buy it? Is there a way, when we're looking at it in a moment, like if people come or leave to, well, it's more of a leave party, isn't that where you buy it? You know, we're doing an exit interview or exit survey with our staff, is there a way to do that with parents or students to know?
To know why they're, why they're leaving the district. So we can do that. I, I mean, that is something that I think is very beneficial for us. A lot of the movement has been for jobs. That has been a lot of the movement that we've seen. And so that's the trend that I can tell you that I know of right now. But we could, we could put together definitely an exit.
I think, you know, when people leave, if it's job, you know, geography is geography.
There's not a whole lot that we can do on that.
Yeah, that would be hard to, but, but if it's, you know, I don't want to say something, but we go, well, that's not happening. But if there's something that we can pinpoint to really improve services, or if it's a communication issue, you know, if there's something we can identify to help us improve the kids that are still here or to recapture, we can all those kids, I don't know, it would be helpful to know.
Madam President, members of the board, I just want to also point out, as Cindy reminded us last week, when you look at the high schools, you look at the transition buildings, realize that you're looking at, for example, eighth grade from two thousand twenty-one becomes your ninth grade from two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three. And you can see that stair step. Remember that, students in ninth grade, in order for them to be classified as a sophomore, you have to attain a certain number of credits. And if you don't attain a certain number of credits, you remain a ninth grader. Just like your tenth grade, you go, wow, we, we lost X amount of ninth graders. Or that, that tenth, ninth grade class is really large. You also have a percentage of students who are changed, who are still at the school, but did not complete earning all their credits. And so at some point this year, or this semester, you'll be getting those credits. Same thing happens in, not so much in the middle school, but really at the high school, you start to see that. Did I say that right?
That's correct.
Cindy's gonna hit Madam if I say it wrong.
No, I think that's correct.
And it helps when you pull it up, it's like, you know, just go diagonally to look at the trend, you know, so like, you can run here to, down to the right. Thank you. Anything else for us?
That'll be all.
That's it? All right, thank you very much. Uh, Associate Superintendent Cindy Barris could not be with us tonight. And so she gave her report to Mr. Alvarez, thank you for that. Um, Ida Dean, Director of Finance, Michelle McCain, do you have anything for us?
Um, I just wanted to mention, you know, we were gonna award an R F P tonight for, um, our tutoring services. And we found that, um, you know, last week was fall break and the deadline was October the tenth for us to receive those. Well, one of the items was, one of the proposals was sent via email and it went into our spam. And so it was missed. And so what we're gonna do, rather than to not give these people the opportunity, you know, that they should have had because it was in there in spam in time, just in the wrong place. So we're gonna evaluate that along with the other respondents and then come back to you with a proposal. Um, right now, what we're looking at is, I believe the lowest proposal was twenty-eight thousand and the highest proposal was a little bit over seventy-eight thousand. So that is the realm that we're looking at. And not all of them met, all of the criteria that we were looking at. So, you know, when you look at R F Ps, it's not about, it's not a bid price. We're not going price, we're looking for the services that we want to be rendered for our students. So price is not the objective in this case. It is the, the access to the services that we're wanting to provide for the students. So that, I just wanted to mention that to you, because you did receive some documentation on it, but we're not gonna be able to pursue that tonight.
Thank you.
Madam President, members of the board, you also will have heard that the governor announced just this, this weekend that they too, the state is also looking at doing an R F P for tutorial services similar to what we just completed. And so it's gonna be interesting to see where the state ends up in this process. It's quite likely that at some point at, at the end of this semester or early next semester, that there will be some sort of an announcement from the governor's office or from the Public Education Department about services it's providing as a pathway for tutoring as well. What we'd like to be able to do is either get a tacit approval for the R F P process tonight or see if it's possible to reconvene real quickly to approve that. What we'd like to be able to do is, as early as November one, be able to be on board providing these high dosage tutoring opportunities for our students from fourth grade all the way through the high school.
Doctor Diaz.
Are these tutoring services gonna be like a virtual deal or are they gonna be in person?
They are virtual, and so they're, they're for, can I speak on it?
Yes, most definitely.
So the, the tutoring opportunities would be twenty-four seven. They would be virtual, they would be, whether it's face-to-face virtual or through chat virtual, right? But they can happen immediately within the classroom. A teacher finishes a lesson, students are working independently. And while a teacher is working with a group of students, a student might be on a different assignment and might log into the chat and say, hey, can you help me with this particular question or activity? Also likewise, students at home can use this resource. Parents can log in to help their students use this resource. I believe that there are also online components that may have video as well. I do know that different services have additions to it, whether it's evaluations of writing or a myriad. So each of these particular programs have additional resources to it. But what we wanted to make sure was that whether a student was working at two o'clock in the afternoon or two o'clock in the morning, if they're, if they're focusing on geometry and hit a, a rough spot, they have the, the additional resources. Not every parent has, is equipped to do geometry, right? And so we want to make sure that our, our kids have the resources to help them accelerate from where their gaps are. And that's what this will be.
So when you say the state is looking to do their own R F P, would that be a statewide tutoring service that we would all be part of or?
Presumably.
Or still, jury's out?
Jury's out. Presumably the state, it, it would have, they're gonna provide something, some type of access. To what degree, um, to what, that part, I don't know. I haven't seen the R F P yet and we don't know which companies will bid on it presumably. I would think some of, some of the same companies that we engage will likewise engage in this. And it'll be interesting to see where the state goes.
Will it be on a referral system or will it be open to any limits?
For our students? Any and every student in the district will have access. And so can you refer to it? Yes, but you, we're, we're, we're gonna make sure that we have enough seats for all of those students in those grades so that you, you can log in at any time. And Mr. Potts, I think, has set me up. And so if I am wrong, please correct me. But I think it would be able to be integrated into their, their tablets. So they should be able to log in from their tablets using clever depending on what we select so that it's seamless and they're not having to go out of our system and log into a separate website to access this resource. Did I say that right?
That's correct.
It sounds better, it sounds better than Android.
Twenty-four seven access.
Twenty-four seven is what we want. Because we have found that our students, whether our kids are traveling, cross-country, they're going in various times.
All right, thank you. Did you have anything else for us?
Later.
Okay, perfect, this is perfect, more than good. Um, Ida Dean, Board of Education, um, one finance subcommittee report. We met last Thursday.
A week ago.
We met before fall break, on Thursday, or Friday.
Friday.
It was a Friday. Um, and we talked about the financial reports as we do every month. Um, you guys will notice that the percentage of budget to salaries was very beautiful. Um, quite to my surprise and probably a lot of ours. And again, we're still kind of settling, the justice is still settling, right? So you see, you know, we've been able to hire some more people. If you look at the, you know, the new, the new hires from last month to this month, there was a substantial change. So those wouldn't have been encumbered. Um, and so she was gonna push a magic button and make sure that everything fell in that number. Um, and so, um, right now, just all things holding steady. We're in a really good place, much better than what, than what I anticipated. The, I thought the top number was our number, but actually it's the middle number. So, um, just something to, to note. Um, we also talked about, um, we go, we go through the checks written every month and we always got questions. Um, I told her I would commit myself to making a cheat sheet so I don't ask the same questions every single time. Um, what else did we talk about, Patrick?
We just went over all the reports and I'm, I'm real appreciative with Martha and you and your team. Any questions we have, you guys have an answer for it. There's no pause, it's just, this is what it is. So Ashley and I do appreciate that.
Yeah, very much. Um, we talked a little bit about continuing the compaction process of the salary schedule and so they're gonna be looking at that. And we also talked about the fact that there are committees that have come together and they're looking, they're looking at uh, the increment schedule. So that's being reviewed and just looked at to see if it's meeting our current needs. Because we all know that was the Bible and nobody could touch it, right? So it's being touched. Um, hopefully it will be, um, better for our needs, better, you know, better allocation of the monies that we have available um, to what Silver Schools is focused on and what's very important to, to supporting programs going forward. I think that about covers it. There was a few other small little things that we had questions about. No, there's a big thing. The audit, we're gonna have the audit entrance meeting tomorrow morning at ten AM here at the boardroom, um, at the central office. I would be in attendance, Patrick would be able to join us. Um, and so the budget or the audit is getting ready to kick off. Um, they're here, that's what I heard. We got kicked from the boardroom to the superintendent's office for closed session. So that is the other thing to note, um, that that is going on. And one last thing, we are probably going to move our finance committee meetings to Wednesday, the Wednesday before the board meeting. Is that correct? Is that correct?
Well, absolutely. We haven't kept it.
Kept it Thursday, okay. So we might be moving it to the Wednesday or Thursday. Thursday is, a, a lot of releases played on Thursdays. So we might be moving that to Wednesday, but for November, we kept it. Okay? Um, I think that's all. Item number two, threat assessment committee report, Mr. Flores.
Thank you, Madam President. The threat assessment team, they, they also met before fall break on the fourteenth, Friday. And, uh, what was discussed at that meeting is that they talked about school shootings. And unfortunately, there was another school, school shooting today in St. Louis. But, uh, the threat assessment team met. This is just an overview, overview of what we just, what they discussed. They had four threats of school shootings to our campuses for this school year so far. They've all been at the secondary level. The question has, has come up, who makes the term, the term determination that the threat is credible? And what Mr. Alvarez has done is he's referred it to law enforcement. And after their preliminary investigations, they will deem it, whether it's credible or not credible. Once it has been determined to be credible, then the parents are notified of the threat at the school, what happened. Because, uh, obviously there's a liability if we don't inform some, inform parents that something does happen. A school attendance is becoming an issue after threats. So once a threat has been made to either the high school or junior high, obviously it gets out on social media, kids are talking about it. And shortly thereafter, in, um, attendance is suffering. So the threat assessment is discussing ways to, to counter that. And I talked to, this next one is an interesting question that was brought to the threat assessment committee. And it's how can we be more proactive than reactive to these situations? And like I explained to Mr. Alvarez at one point, I, I think we are more than prepared to react to a violent situation, whether a school shooter or a crisis of weather or a hazmat or something. I think we've really gone above and beyond and we're prepared for it. But we haven't done a lot to be proactive and to reduce that threat. How do we do that? And, um, one way, and it's something that was discussed at one time is, and this is a feeling across the board from teachers, students, parents, is that they wish our security officers were armed. And that's something that the board's gonna have to look at very seriously. I know that there's a plan. I believe with the district attorney that he's gonna get a grant and, and give S R Os to all the schools. But we discussed that at one point in time. And in talking to the administrators of, of each department, which include S C P D and the Sheriff's Department, and even the state police, it, it's hard enough that they get officers to fill their needs in their departments. Much less to add officers to, to help us. And the officers, and I, I just wanted to be on record as well that every, every school has a security officer. He may not be armed, but he is, um, retired certified police officer. So they bring the experience and knowledge to that job as a security officer. It's not just somebody off the street that says, hey, I wanna be a security officer. These guys have, uh, I, I think combined over a hundred, hundred and ten years, the, the five security guards that we have hired. And I, I talked to Mr. Alvarez, but he, he was discussing something, but he was reading a book and I appreciate that. But I also told him that he has a, a, a wealth of information with all the security guards. And I, I suggested that maybe he get together with the meeting with the security guards and pick their brains because they wanna add something to, to the table. And I feel that they think they're being left out, they feel they're being left out because they have a lot of, of ideas that I think will benefit each school because they know their school better than the other schools because they're at that school. But, um, just to go on with the, with the agenda, um, how can we be more proactive? La Plata Middle School, uh, police are visiting with students in October, was it last week?
They already passed.
Yeah, last week, November second, they're having an anti-bullying speaker who will visit with Harrison Schmidt, Stout, J V, Middle School, the high school. Schools will utilize a dare program, Red Ribbon Week, and E-rate separate bullying. And lastly, the Say Something app is working well. All principals agree and are happy that the school community has a voice. So we are, we do have those, those resources out there. But like I said, uh, unfortunately, we live in a different time and, um, I think we're just, we're just dodging a bullet. And I, I think we need to be more proactive. I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions for Mr.?
I was just curious as far as, um, uh, we talk about like the mental health or different crises that come up and with the loss of, of one of our, our students and kiddos, did we activate, um, the counseling services through this, through the threat assessment committee?
Through the, uh, Vice President, uh, Dr. Diaz. So we, we activated the crisis intervention team. Uh, I'm working currently right now with Palms and Associates to actually get them some training, additional training. Uh, they, they do have their training, of course, for, for being social workers, counselors, that type of thing. But we wanna get them some additional training, which is called first aid mental health. And so that's what we're, we're working on. I'm working right now with Palms and Associates. So hopefully we'll be able to provide that training. It's an eight-hour course, uh, but here in the very near future.
For all, like the translation?
That would be for all of the crisis, uh, uh, intervention people. And so we have a whole team of crisis intervention that range from nurses to counselors to social workers uh, that come together when there's a crisis in one of our schools. And we wanna get them some additional mental health training.
Madam President, uh, Vice President. So the, the next day, that morning, the governor's scholarship was informed. We, it, it immediately engaged crisis intervention team. That involves reaching out to special education directors, doing the assessments, the team. They meet with the principal, they assess the situation, they get the information going for members of staff. And we need as far as retaining based on grade level, they have, they do their evaluation process. And then those counselors are deployed, I say counselors, I'm including the social workers, I'm including the school psychologists. They're deployed to that site. They're there for, they're probably still in some ways still engaged now, but they're there for several weeks, right? They, they balloon back or they, they pull back based on the need, right, of the resources. The, the principal also leads through that. And I, I'm just gonna pause and give them the opinion and his social worker team. They did an exceptional job in the way in which they engage. There are definitely areas where we're gonna continue to get better. It is, it's unfortunate to lose a student and to lose a peer, a child in any time. And, and having to live through it, it is a body major process is very difficult. And so I, I commend them for all the stuff that, that to your point, yes, ma'am, that, that team is activated immediately through Mr. Co.
You too.
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions?
Madam President, Mr. Flores, you mentioned.
Madam President, Mr. Flores, you mentioned, I think, November second, there's gonna be programs across our elementary school. And I think, Mr. Hawkins, you sent the information out to the parents where in Silver Heights, there's also gonna be, is that open to the public, correct? Is there any more information you wanna share about that?
Um so uh Madam President, Mr. McMillan, so in addition to this, and I just want to say half off to the principals, the Star Cruzes, Megan Evans, you know, they, the early on, the new year, that this was a target area that they wanted to get into. So they took the lead and going through evaluating the different providers of resources and presentations for our kids. Um but they also wanted to make sure that whoever provided full presentation to the kids also had an opportunity to engage parents. And make sure that parents had an opportunity to go through a presentation. And so on November second, I think six thirty, at the Little Theater, I think, through the high school, there's gonna be an opportunity for parents to likewise hear the type of message that the students are hearing and also engage and get some insight and ways to make it help uh protect their students and all their students and how to deal with um these types of situations. Um as more information comes out, um through Ms. Evans and Ms. Cruz, we'll share it with the community. Ms. Cruz, did I miss anything?
No, that, that, that um covers it. And it's Megan that really got the ball rolling on that one for us. And um we just saw such an increase in cyberbullying with the kids, bullying and harassment in general, that it was, you know, it felt almost like it was spinning out of control. And so we just wanted to try to give the kids a different perspective and a different way to look at how to approach each other, how to talk to each other, um how to be social with one another. And so um, so she put that out to us, we all agreed, and, and so it's, it's gonna be great to have it all through the entire district. That every kid will get a presentation to their level of, of what it should, of what cyberbullying is and how it affects everybody. And so.
And likewise, this week, our local police department as well is engaging with, with this middle school and high school, or just middle school?
I'm not sure if it's at the high school, but at the middle, I was just on Thursday, the twenty-seventh, they will be coming and doing their presentation on cyberbullying and also some kind of um more information to.
School shooting list in the commons of any school, and the school security guard hears it, he's gonna do what everybody else is doing, seek cover, because he can't engage. Whereas if the officer was armed, I, I believe that his training would immediately take over and engage that suspect. And statistics have proven that if a shooter takes fire from somebody else, the fatalities are a lot lower. And, and I don't know what, what our solution is to, to come up with this, but I don't know um if it's appropriate, but maybe we send a survey out to parents, students, staff, and see how they feel, and that we can maybe hear their voice. Because this is com, this is becoming a more common thing that we see it in the news all the time. And like I told you before, at some point, people become desensitized to it and just listen to something else. But I guarantee you, those people in Uvalde have, have not become desensitized anymore. And that was a terrible tragedy, but um that's all I have with threat assessment.
So while we're on the topic, because it does keep coming up every month, and I don't want you to hear, feel like we're not hearing you. Um and there does need to be more conversation around it. Um my understanding was initially we wanted to arm them. And then new legislation came out from the state, which did not allow us to arm them. Am I, am I incorrect in this?
Um when we first talked about it with the prior administration, and I had gone to the, that law conference, and I brought up a question to the attorneys that were presenting, and I talked to one of my, my coworkers that is a retired state policeman as well. And he's running school security for, for an Albuquerque area, private school, not, I mean, somewhere in Albuquerque. But um we, we would have been grandfathered in at that time, because there was no protocols. And the only thing that was required is that they had a certain number of, of training hours with the firearm. And these officers that all retired in good standing from their departments, whether it is state police, sheriff's department, or, or Silver City, um they had, they have hundreds of hours underneath their belt of the experience that they're talking about. So they did tell us at that point in time, we would have been grandfathered in more than likely.
Right.
So it wouldn't have really been um us jumping through all those hoops that they have now.
But we're not there. Like, we can't go back.
Can't go back. Yeah, so, so, so there, there are some, some hoops that we have to jump through. And I, I don't know that these officers that we have now would wanna go through. And I'm, I'm talking for myself.
Right.
But um.
And that's kinda why we just were like, okay, we're happy with what we have.
Right. And, and I think.
And we're gonna keep this status quo, but I don't, I don't know the solution.
I think the solution would be maybe having a meeting with, with principals and the security guards and saying, hey, this is what's required, we can find out what's required, this is what you guys might have to do. But after that, you, you know, there's a chance that we can arm you guys. Um I think we just have to look at different ways to, to address this. And I think the first one is, is having a meeting with them and saying, seeing how they feel.
Okay. Could you faci-
But knowing really what the movement.
Yeah, could you facilitate that? Could you possibly look into what the, what the requirements are now with, within the state legislature?
Absolutely.
Um and then facilitate a meeting so that we can get some information and then we can move forward. Does the board feel comfortable with that? Yes, okay.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Flores.
Yes ma'am.
All right. Um next item on our agenda is Board of Education, Board President, and this one is just, I mean, right in line with that. At our Region Eight meeting, um we had a presenter that worked in Aztec and now works with Palms and Associates, or Nipsey?
Palms and Associates.
Yeah. And he does presentations. And so um he talked about some things that we could do, you know, just within our sites to make them safer. And so I would encourage, you know, if we could get that again and just review it at all of our school sites, right? It was fencing, it was door locks, it was.
Windows.
Uh windows, um tinting. It was simple stuff that I think is very easy to institute um within our district that I thought. It was a, it was a great presentation. He was, he was very, um you could tell that's gonna be his life's mission, right? To try to make sure, yeah, very passionate, thank you for that word, um that that doesn't happen again, you know, 'cause he was working at, at the Aztec. But um all of our, all of the board was there. Um it was a great presentation. We were able to honor um a prior Senator John Arthur Smith, and he was a long time um standing, is that right? Um member of our finance subcommittee. Um and so he won't be going back up there. But he did, he did caution us um on tapping into the land grant fund. And so that's gonna be on our ballot coming up this, this time. And so um I just really encourage people to do the research, um because what he had to say, coming from someone who's been there for a very long time, is to recover from touching the, the land grant fund could potentially be very disastrous for, for schools. And so we all need to um be educated on that, as it is, it is on our ballot. So do some research on that. Um so great Region Eight meeting. Thank you, Lordsburg, for hosting. We will be hosting the next one coming up, the spring budget meetings, or the spring um Region Eight meeting. And um Mr. Patrick Khan was um nominated to the, the board of the Region Eight, so congratulations on that. Um I want to, 'cause I always am the one that forgets about thanking Emery Flores and the Pro Start Program. The food tonight is delicious as it is always. So thank you to her and her program and her kids. Um thank you to the administrative staff here at Central Office that always makes the boardroom so festive. Um it's just, it's really neat, 'cause none of us are in the classrooms on a daily. I'm sure classrooms are just decorated beautifully, right? But like our offices are just like, well, you get what you get. But um so it's nice to come into a very, a very festive area. So thank you for that, um kinda pulling us in. Um on a sad note, condolences, as we were just talking about, um for the young person that, that we lost in our schools district. Um we all share our condolences to the parents, the grandparents, the classmates, um just we all hurt. So um also Mr. Kendrick, along our really long time, amazing band director. Um and many great ones have come after him, but um we also share our condolences on him. And then last month, I don't know that we were able to share our condolences with the um football player that they lost in Los Cruces. And so just some really sad stuff. Um but just to know that Silver Schools is, is there and we support, support them and, and feel their pain. Um I also, I was telling Diaz this last, last month, um I wanna thank our families, um your families, your families, because they also sacrificed for us to be here. So thank you to our families, the board members. And I also wanna just thank my fellow board members. It's um, it's a phenomenal group to be a part of. I think we do a great job together, and I feel um blessed to be a part of you. Thank you. Thank you.
I got a phone. Yeah, I still have a napkin.
You do, I don't. I'm, I'm good though. Just blink, 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 blink.
Um that's a tough one to follow. I, I uh agree with Ashley. You know, we get into this and we have worked together and collaborated for a long time. And it was really neat to see that we have a little bit more experience under our belt as we go to these region meetings and go, oh wow, ours is getting, we're, we're getting there, we're getting there. Um and so it was a really great meeting hosted by Lordsburg, and we did come back with a lot of information. You know, the, the knowledge means nothing if we don't apply it. And I think that's Ashley's point, where, you know, we need to go back and um look at that. And, and there are small things that are doable, they're affordable, right? There are things that we can, they're just subtle things that we can do on a day-to-day basis. And, and I appreciate us circling back around to, to look and see what does the current, uh you know, what are the current rules, right? What rules are we playing by so that we can understand what options we have and then make a decision moving forward with current um information. Um wanna congratulate the fall um activities and sports. And there's, you know, been tournament competitions for bands, and there's been all kinds of different things. And so I just wanna congratulate everybody. And um it's really neat to see the school spirit out there. It's been really fun. I finally got to make a football game. That was, um it was nice just to see, you know, everybody out there supporting. Um I uh, I was lucky enough to uh be part of the band when Mr. Kendrick was there. And uh that guy was the nicest man who had a way of engaging any kid and two hundred at a time. And I don't know how he did that, um but I always imagined that he had like twenty kids at home. So um but what an amazing person and wow. I mean, to um, you know, the legacy that he left and the tone that he set. He um was an amazing educator, but just an amazing person beyond that, amazing man. And so I think it's important, you know, we're here and then we're gone, and um the impression you leave is what's left, right? And uh the footprint that he left um is just really, um it's left a huge impress, impression on so many people. There's a huge article in the paper about it, and there's a reason for that. So uh our condolences to his family, but also a celebration of a life well-lived, one that we hope we can follow in. So um I also um definitely wanted to um just give my thoughts and prayers to um Izzy's family. Um uh he is the little guy that was lost and was a part of our stout community and just our district. And uh no one wants to see a child lost. And uh I think it just helps remind us that every day is precious with our kiddos and how precious every kid is. And so um but definitely, um and for all the support that was laid out and set forth for, you know, staff and students and families. So um that definitely left an impression. Um thank you for um the food again. Uh and uh I really appreciate the administrative people that have come, right, all our staff. And when you show up, we, it's noticed, and we really appreciate it, 'cause then you take it back and run with it. Or you make us aware of things that we, we just don't know, we're up here and we're orchestrating through policy. But the reality is, we need to know what's really going on when the implementation occurs, so that we can modify as necessary. So thank you for that. Um having said that, um tons of elections going on, and what I would tell people is vote. We're not here to tell you what position to take. We all clearly have our own opinions. You know, I always have an opinion. Um but what I would say is, it's so important to let your voice be heard. And it's not only a privilege, but it's really our responsibility um to go out and, and, and make our voices heard and to advocate for what we really believe in. So I think it's really important um that people recognize that and that we also, you know, we don't necessarily need to impress our views on our kids, but we need to impress upon them how important it is to advocate for what they believe in and to go vote. So. And on that note, I really thank you for being here. Uh it's, it's a privilege um that you guys are here. And, and really, we're lucky to have you advocating for our community. So thank you for your service.
Mr. Khan.
You guys always take what I'm gonna say. So it's um, it, it's, it's a hard act to follow. But again, um I wanna thank everybody in attendance, Representative Arasas and Madam Senator Coria Hemphill. Thank you so much for being here and advocating, like Dr. Diaz said, for our students and for our district. Um I'm, I'm not gonna say everything that Madam Chair and, and Vice Chair have, have elaborated on. But I, I do, on a positive note, I'm very proud of our eighth and seventh grade football team. They went and had an undefeated um football season. Um I, I, I wish we could do so much more just to con, you know, congratulate them on their efforts. They work so hard. And um um Principal Cruz, thank you so much for, um it, it all comes from leadership down to your teachers, your coaches and your athletes. It's, it, you can see it. So thank you so much for being a big leader at, out in La Plata. It, it, you can see that. Um I also wanna thank Mr. Hawkins for his be kind efforts around the district. I, I've seen that there's a full anom, nominal of just positive vibes coming out of that. So thank you so much for your efforts on, on for bullying and, and so forth. Um my kids have just enjoyed just um sharing the, the love and just being kind in general. So thank you so much for that. I, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Khan. Mr. McMillan.
Thank you. Um um thank, thank you all for, everybody that's, that's taken the time to be here with us tonight. I appreciate that. Um as, as our fall kinda wraps up, I hope everybody's uh come off of a, a fall break. If, if you got a fall break, uh staff and, and students especially, ho- hopefully it was restful and you're able to recharge as we, as we roll into our, our winter and winter activities. Um and before we know it, the, the end of the year will be here. So um keep your heads up and, and keep going strong. Thanks for the meal uh from our SHS uh program. I appreciate that every month. It's, it's always, always appreciated. And um uh thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Mr. Flores.
I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna say everything. You guys ditto with what you guys did. Um except I, I do, I do wanna offer condolences to the, to the young man's family from Stout. I can't imagine what they're going through. And uh, and to Mr. Kendrick's family, our.
I can't imagine what they're going through and, uh, and to Mr. Kendrick's family, our condolences to them, thank you.
And we'd be remiss if we didn't mention that Superintendent said, even the cafeteria tastes good when your football team is winning, right? So, um, and soccer girls, I think, one state, and so lots of, lots of athletics wrapping up, but thank you for all that. Fellow board members, um, item number six, open public comment, I did not receive any either, so. Um, item number seven, action items, um, Director of Finance, Ms. Michelle McKing.
Okay, I will start out, um, this evening with, um, our financial reports, the checks, um, seeking approval for the checks written in the month of September. They totaled two million nine hundred thirteen thousand ninety-three dollars and fourteen cents. Um, we have a budget adjustment request, um, this month. I always tell you, um, I leave them off to the last moment because sometimes it is the last moment. And our act, the last one that we received, um, that's on my list, we actually received this afternoon, and so. We'd have to wait a whole nother month before we, um, got this into, um, to the, um, Public Ed Department to get budget approval for it once it's been approved by y'all, so. I'm glad that, you know, y'all were set that we hold on to the very last moment on these. Um, my first budget adjustment is just, um, transferring money within our operational budget to cover the cost. Um, we have, uh, added technology person, and we also have, um, some ancillary services, some contracted ancillary services. That we, um, went out for, um, proposal for and, and, um, received, and I, so I just wanted to, to balance the books and, and, and clean up the budget. To cover all of that, those were things that weren't initially planned for last year, but there was a need this year and we had, um, the funding and just not in the right place. At the, the right time, so that is being moved. Um, we, uh, received our prior year carryover for our idea B preschool grant. Um, that's in the amount of six thousand seven hundred ninety-three dollars. We usually use that grant, um, the grant is usually anywhere from twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars. And we use it to offset part of the cost of one of our IAs that are in the preschool classroom. Um, if there is a need for supplies or anything like that, we do of course, um, look at those needs and, and meet those, but a, after that, we go ahead and use that to. Offset the cost of, um, the staffing. Um, and then the final grant, the one that I was telling you about is our, um, public school capital outlay. About two months ago, Mr. Hawkins received, um, a letter stating that the, um, capital outlay was gonna, they had additional funding. And asked if we had any needs that we could use that funding for, well, you know, our brand new district with all our brand new buildings, we said no. We, um, we told them yes and, you know, whatever they could allocate for us and, and we were, um. Initially told about two hundred and, um, eleven thousand, but our final award that's actually money in the bank that we're seeking approval for tonight is. Two hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars and eighty-two cents. Um, when we sent this to them, we had to give them a scope of work that we, you know, our intentions on how we were gonna use this so that. We can then, um, report follow-up on when we've actually completed the projects. Um, when we were looking at it, we, um, needed additional funding for, um, facilities repairs to update, um. A walk-in freezer out at Harrison Schmidt that has, um, been the bane of our existence for a little while. But we're working on that to get it going so that we can, uh, of course, keep the food, um, for the students, we had, um, uh. Some sewer pump issues out at Harrison again, and so we're using those, um, the facilities, um, funds for that. And also, um, to work on the sewer system out at, um, Cliff because of the flooding issues and stuff where there's a need there. And if with all of those things completed, we have enough money, then we will look at the recoding of some of the, um, the roofing at, um, some of the sites that has. Um, degraded over time, and so, um, with this funding, we're, um, able to meet, um, these. Funding needs that we have and also will allow us to look at some other facilities, um. Upgrades or maintenance that, that have, um, not happened over time, and so what we've, um, looked at, um. Mr. Hawkins had the, um, different schools, the high school, the middle school and Cliff Schools looking at their weight rooms. Because I think they have the original equipment from when I was in school, and so we probably need to upgrade cuz it's just been a minute, but, you know. Anyway, um, they're looking at that, you know, to, um. Not only repair, but replace a lot of the equipment that is obsolete and broken down so that we can, you know, meet the needs of all of our students, athletes. And, you know, our students that just are in ME classes and, and things like that that, um, would use that equipment. So those are our three, um, budget adjustment requests for which I seek your approval, and we have a wonderfully long list of donations. For which, um, I wanna share our thanks with our community, we had, um, Amplified Therapy who, um. Donated fifteen hundred dollars towards Cliff's Fall Fest. Um, we had Coyote Fin, uh, Phoenix who, uh, contributed five hundred dollars to Cliff's Fall Fest. Dement Electric, um, donated eight hundred dollars to Silver Scholars Academy. Alx Lodge four thirteen, um, donated so, um, five hundred dollars to Silver High Pep Club. And five hundred dollars to, um, Cliff Schools PE. Grant County Title Company donated five hundred dollars to Cliff's Fall Fest and Silver City Dental donated thirty-five hundred dollars to Silver High Band. And so, um, with this wonderful generosity coming from our community, I mean, you know, we are a public school district and, and we do get funded on tax dollars. But we all know that it's never enough, and for our community to constantly step up and help our students, you know, with, um, all of these measures is just amazing. Um, and so for all of those things, we're very thankful for. Um, the final thing on my list is you have attached, um, to your board book, a list of all of our, um, items for disposal. That, um, list is quite lengthy, um, and it has multiple tabs, I don't know if you noticed at the bottom. But, um, we have a lot of equipment that is obsolete or, um, no longer, um, working. The stuff that is junk, we take to the dump, but the stuff that looks like it might have some value that we can get something out of it, we're gonna, um, have an auction and Ben is gonna put it online. We'll have an online auction that'll start once we get approval for the disposable, uh, disposal of these items. And then that is, you know, those funds go back into the operational budget to, you know, help offset some of the cost of other items. But for all of those things I just listed, I seek your approval tomorrow.
Thank you, was anyone able to access the disposal listing in their board book?
It's a PDF.
It's, it's here, but when I click on it, it's an error.
I did see it.
I think it was in our board book last month as well.
Was it? Okay.
So we'll make sure to go back in, double check that you all, all have access.
Yeah, as long as everyone's good with approving it. Good? Alright, so, um, we seek approval for budget finance purchasing, financial reports. Checks written, budget adjustments, donations and disposable, disposal of auction items.
Motion.
Well, I was gonna say, what is going on? Second by Mr. Khan, any discussion?
Thank you for the donations.
Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Item B, transportation, Mr. Victor Wahaka, Transportation Director, I see he's not with us, nothing, nothing tonight? Alright, and then, um, item eight, consideration and approval of strategic plan progress. And so again, um, we just wanted to get this on there for discussion, if there's anything that we wanna discuss as a board right now. Based on what Mr. Hawkins presented, obviously happy to table for future to wait and see how the rest of it develops. But we did want it to be available for discussion should anyone want to discuss. Board members.
I, I would just say, um, I am completely content to move forward with the progress. And I think it's hard to have a whole bunch of irons in the fire, but in this case, I, I think it's straightforward because we're just looking at the baseline. We're not trying to provide interventions for those, so I think when it comes to interventions, we will wanna focus on the top few priorities. But I think when we're trying to kind of lay the groundwork and really make the initial assessment for a baseline, I think we need to have all that information to be even. Be able to prioritize what that plan needs to look like, so I'm comfortable moving forward.
Okay, would that be, would that be correct in this, if we were to make an approval tonight, it would be strictly for assessing baseline? Would that be accurate?
I'm not sure if I would, I would use it as strictly for assessing, but what you'll see is most of, most if not all of the goal data for this first year. Will be baseline in origin, and so that would be the, yes, I, I wanna make sure I accurately reflect.
Keep it vague enough to.
Cuz, cuz at the same time, for example, for, for example, community engagement, while there's not baseline data to be accrued as far as surveys. You'll definitely see that the district has taken great strides to engage our community, and so. There's, there's evidence there that you're gonna see that would be baseline.
Yeah, yeah. Alright, any, anything anyone else would like to add?
I would agree, Madam President, I would agree it, um, I think I'm comfortable moving forward with, with the information, the progress so far.
Did you have something to add?
How do we wanna handle the tutoring, um?
RFP, yeah, I was gonna, where, when we get to future meetings, we'll talk about that. I made a note. I paid attention. I paid attention, teacher. Um, okay, so we have two board members that are comfortable moving forward with an action, um, on this.
Should I make a motion so we can have formal discussion?
Sure.
I'll make a motion for approval of the strategic plan progress.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, any further discussion? Mr. Fletus?
I'm comfortable, yeah.
Alright, we have a motion and a second, no further discussion, seeing, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? That motion passes.
Thank you, I will do better at explaining.
No, you're good, you're good. Um, as mentioned, that next, um, action item was already approved in the consent agenda. Um, item ten, open public comments, I don't think anything's come over, okay. Um, future meetings and proposed agenda items, so as mentioned, there is that outstanding RFP. Um, that it sounds like they would like to get our approval so that that can be happening by November first. What would be the soonest we could do a meeting?
Um, Friday or Thursday?
Thursday or Friday?
And we can do, uh, excuse me, Madam President, members of the board, we could meet as early as in the morning, seven thirty or eight o'clock, or we could do an afternoon. But it won't be a very lengthy meeting, would be comparable to what a work session would look like, if not significantly shorter.
So I could do Thursday at seven thirty.
In the morning?
Yes. Or eight, seven thirty or eight.
So a, any, yes ma'am, any time in the morning, Thursday the twenty-seventh?
Does that give us enough time? Cuz Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday? For notice, or is it, is it considered an emergency meeting? Special meeting?
So I, I, I think Friday actually.
It would have to be Friday. Um, would there be a chance that some people could, um, remote in, I'm leaving town Thursday. Or you guys could just do it.
Madam President, if we have a quorum, we could.
Right. So what time works well for you three on Friday?
That morning?
Seven thirty Friday?
Seven thirty and we'll ask Miss Berish to bring donuts.
We don't have donut shop anymore.
And can we make the option to telephone in?
I think we can, I know that other board members or other communities do that, where you can telephone in, so we can absolutely do that.
Yeah, I could, we could do that. So for sure you'll have those three, that's a quorum, and then if we could get in.
Special board meeting to approve or decline the tutoring.
To award.
Award, RFP. Thank you, um, Madam President, members of the board, appreciate that.
Alright, next meeting, um, regular scheduled meeting is in November, we're gonna be out in Cliff. We decided to move it up a week. Um, and I don't have my phone, I, I guess that's still on Monday?
November the fourteenth.
Yep.
Yes ma'am.
Okay, so November the fourteenth in Cliff, um, our audit, at six PM, yes, we, we won't have a work session. So that we can travel. Um, the entrance audit meeting is tomorrow morning at ten AM. The Finance Committee meeting, we're gonna keep as the Thursday before the meeting at four PM. And then the New Mexico School Board Association Twenty Twenty Two Annual Convention in Albuquerque, December first through the third. We had a piece of paper in here to let Lisa know if you're planning on attending, so be sure to fill that out before you go. And then we have events and announcements, um, I'm not gonna go through all of them because what happens is. Mr. Hawkins misses the most important one. Um, but it's on there, so lots going on in the district, whether it's Halloween related, sports related. Um, FFA was at Nationals, we've got lots of trick or treating going on. We hope that the Cliff Ball Festival goes really well and is a great fundraiser as it always is, so, um, just those to know. If there's any that we, you guys think we should bring out to people's attention, feel free, anybody? Alright. Next item on our agenda is item eight, executive session, executive session, the board may like to go into executive session for reasons permitted. In the New Mexico Open Meetings Act, the NMSA nineteen seventy-eight subsection ten dash thirteen dash one, H one through nine. And we will be going into executive tonight for a short time, so, um, I need a motion to go into executive. Motion by Dr. Diaz, I have a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Khan, will you please do a roll call? Whoa, that was spooky.
Madam Chair, Ashley Montenegro?
Yes.
Madam Vice Chair, Dr. Michelle Diaz?
Yes.
Secretary Patrick Khan, yes. Uh, school board member Mike McMillan?
Yes.
And school board member Eddie Flores?
Yes.